It's two o'clock, we're gonna get started. The purpose of this meeting is to get the department head, who did not have opportunity to come before the council, at the budget hearings on last week. And any follow-up questions that council members may have during this time? And as you know, we are at the eve of the budget being passed by October 1st. So, this is the last pitch that we're trying to bring things to the doorstep. At this time, I think Mr. Harry and Mr. Thompson, did you get an opportunity to come before it?
No, I didn't.
Okay, if you would please come forward.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I need to go in on my own, but I've got this question I want to ask this conference. I thought I had it in my bag, but I don't have it. So I'm gonna make sure I ask it. Take it back.
Mr. Thompson, my question to you is, I looked at the budget, and I see it's a cost-saving. You have three part-time employees, which would save on benefits. What about the three part-time, what are they going to be doing?
Well, they are basically listed under the, under the, under my employee salary, which is page number four of thirty. And their title, Welcome Center Attendants. And they're basically twelve hours a week, three days a week.
Twelve hours?
Yes.
Unless it's for benefits?
Yes, yes, it's actually will be a cost-savings ultimately. Total salary is line item for my budget is a hundred and six, less than a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Is that the contract from last year or not?
Uh, it's actually about a ten thousand dollar increase overall. It went from one forty-eight to one fifty-nine, which is ten thousand dollar difference.
For what increase?
It was for the three-part-time Welcome Center Attendants.
So you're gonna add one seventy?
Yes.
Do we have enough in the budget this year, projected budget?
Yes.
Or magic funds for the grant?
Yes, well, the way it came up, it came up based upon revenue and growth. We're looking to explore the tourism aspect of the Welcome Center, as well as a meet and greet overall. So there will be a coordinator that will be stationed here, as well as three attendants, which will ultimately, we will not only do civil rights tours, but as well as ghost tours.
But it's four?
Well, total, yes.
How about the AmeriCorps, is it on?
Yes, AmeriCorps.
On a monthly basis?
Yes, it is, on a monthly basis. Our total is ninety-six thousand dollars match for that. It's listed under our grant match portion, which is on page eight.
Now since the James President told you more, the amount of money that was put in there to rehab it and to do things, it's not gonna be taken out of last year, like ways of fixing issues.
It's going to be needed to be added to my special projects line item, which is page number seven of the actual budget. And it's gonna have to be an increase of fifty thousand dollars, which was already budgeted for last year, but it wasn't allowed to be used in the last year's fiscal budget. So it will have to be to current. Yeah, we've already purchased, I think it's the naming, the earned for the naming. Outside of that, I'm not sure where else, missing the budget for that. But we did sign off on that recently, like a couple of weeks ago, for the naming of that part.
But what it needs is gonna be put back into this budget, because you wanna get that part, I feel, this by January?
Yes, it will require additional adding to. Basically, it was gonna come from last year's line item, and it's just gonna be reinserted into the current budget.
Remember I asked you about, in the budget dealing with the, you said the tourists?
Yes, ma'am.
You just spoke about the tourists?
Yes, ma'am.
In the budget, I was hoping for something to be in there where, that we would have where, you know, like when the tourists come into the city?
Yes, ma'am.
And we have some areas in our, in our community, that's a part of the tourists, of the city itself.
Yes.
And I was looking to see where that we have anything in the budget, where that we have the city be a part of the tourists, historic tourists.
Yes, yes, we want to get the city completely involved in that, as well as a part of the experience. A couple of years ago, if you all can remember, we used to do Black Heritage Field Trips for children, in which kids used to come and they would pay like four dollars or something, and then they would tour a lot of the civil rights places. What we're attempting to do, we're attempting to bring that back, but in a little larger scale, that will allow people that are visiting, or people that are from here, to get a realistic view of some of the things that this great city has to offer.
So, do you have this, do you have it included in this budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thompson, you all, you all cover special projects?
Uh, no, well, no.
Uh, so, the explanation is very brief. For it to be two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in that, in that particular line item, the explanation is a sentence, one letter. And it only includes in the explanation thirty-five thousand dollars, and then you say other projects. So you have?
Special projects, are you looking at page seven?
I'm looking at one sixty-eight, page seven, one sixty-eight. We have to do page seven?
I, I should have called it being on today.
Yeah, I have a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Is it explained in this one?
Yes, it's one twenty-eight for amphitheaters, that's thirty thousand, but it's gonna increase by fifty thousand.
Let me look at this page seven. Okay, so, okay, I got two budgets, two budgets I'm looking at. Special projects, so you have thirty thousand?
That's correct.
And the one twenty-eight for the amphitheater, did we go over there?
Well, that, that is currently the portion that was left undone. And what's happening is that roof that is listed on that building, is deteriorating and never was, it never was, the roof was never a part of the initial project, so it was left to be done. And we had job corps on site where we could have done it, just paying for materials at the time, but one of the gentlemen got hurt during that process, and it never was done. So ultimately, what's happening now, water is getting into the building from that side, and it's only gonna deteriorate even more if we don't put a roof on that facility.
Okay, so job corps is exactly what I was gonna ask you about, because we had that labor. And now it has disappeared, we don't have that labor anymore?
Well, the actual, the reason that they are saying they can't do it now, they don't have the staff that's large enough, and then they had to travel at that time to actually do that. A hundred and twenty thousand is probably less than what we're ultimately gonna do, but we're gonna look at other avenues in regards to being grant funds, or something else to assist with that, to make sure that we can get that project done.
You answered all my questions, why don't I ask them? That's what I was gonna ask you, is there not a grant to pay for this?
No, you won't pay for it completely.
Workforce development?
Yes, that could be a possibility. We, with a couple of the junior colleges, we've used several avenues before in regards to cost savings, and basically what we put in here as a cost saving. Because ultimately, to roof, to do a full-scale roof for that building that size, is probably gonna be about three to four hundred thousand dollars. But we got it estimated at a percentage of that, based on if we can go out and secure additional funds.
Okay, right before councilman Louie, question, you were answering my question about grants. And you said not fully, they won't fully pay for it, what does that mean?
Well, they, majority of them are grant matches, in which you have to pay a portion of it, and which they will assist. And there are several avenues in which we can look at. We can look at the Alabama Historic Commission, we can look to Adacca, we can look at different, even, even, you may even be able to look at Alna, being that it was an old transportation building, it's a possibility. But ultimately, we're gonna have to explore all of those avenues, being that it's an old historic structure. But the bigger issue is, if we don't do anything to it, it's gonna basically compromise the portion that we did work on, so.
And here was something for you.
Well, I, we write grants in our department, but ultimately, we will review and find out what's the best facet to go at, that's gonna give us the best opportunity to get. And that maybe we may have to outsource it, if feasible, or if it can't be done within our own department. We'll make sure that that's done as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Part of the council, I would probably send you to direct some of that workforce development money, because they have money allocated to the state, people kept the progress.
Okay, I sure will.
Just for clarity, you're talking about the unfinished part of the amphitheater that goes off, if you look at the front of the amphitheater to the left? You're talking about that building's leaking?
To the right, the two-story portion.
That, that, we just never did a roof on there?
No.
So we just put all that money into that, but we didn't think about the roof?
It was, it was planned, but the project came in a lot over the estimated budget at that time. And basically, there were some issues with the architect at that time, in which the city ended up having to sever ties with the current.
Remember all that, so, I remember that happened.
Yes, so ultimately, we didn't have sufficient funds at that time to do it.
To do the two-story side of it?
Yes, and we were in negotiations with job corps to try to get them to do it, because they did assist on the other side with that, to kind of do some cost savings. But when we got to that portion, the head person failed. And after that time, some of their funding was cut, and the travel from Montgomery, because they were under the Montgomery.
So, so that whole unfinished stretch on the other side, the left-hand side of the amphitheater?
Yes.
The actual main structure that's the stage is fine?
Yes, that's fine.
It's just that two-story section?
Yes, but the whole thing is, it has started to compromise around the edge. It's starting to leak into the current portion, which ultimately created some other issues with our.
Cascading effect when it comes to your integrity being compromised.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Never know moment.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have, at the time when you did the amphitheater, who wasn't here? Do you have the layout on how much was put into that, that amphitheater, on what, what all they did?
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind, can I see it?
Yes, ma'am, there are plans that were associated.
Something like after the work, you know, after the money that you used, investing at the amphitheater, to all the things that were supposed to have been done during that time?
Sure, the contracts between the contractor and the architect that did the design, as well as the portion that was covered by job corps, which we basically did, where we had to buy the shingles and the materials, and basically, they covered the labor on that portion, but yes.
In reference to the grant writing, I think up to this point, Mr. Thompson, you were the reason that you had a heck of a job, in trying to get whatever resources that's out there. I'm hoping, praying that you will come to a point that you will have to reach out to, employ an additional support for right of favor, that you will be able to handle whatever chores you use. But I'm sure that if it's something beyond your capability, you're willing to do it. But up to this point, I just want to conlie you in terms of that portion.
Thank you, and that was looked at as well as in this budget as a whole. We looked at the addition and a part of the community development as well portion, in looking at my overall staff and what we were looking to do, and expand the roles in utilizing the Welcome Center attendants, and having someone to coordinate that portion. It kind of gives us both sides covered, where we're covering the planning as well as the community side.
You have a budget, do you want to give something to say?
No, no.
I heard you speaking of terrific in the Welcome Center.
Yes.
Terrific when I got here, you were speaking of, and then you keep telling us about the Welcome Center and the staff. Is your entire budget on page seven?
No.
Where is the register?
Uh, you can go to page thirty, which is a portion of my budget. Page eight is my grant matching. There it is. Page thirty-three shows you the overall breakdown versus last year's in the total for my department as a whole. And as well as page thirty-two is a portion of my budget, which is basically the tree commission, which is, none of those amounts changed though, in that, so. But you can look at them, page twenty-eight as well is a portion of my budget. There was no changes made in any of those areas.
In your wages and salaries?
Yes.
That's where your director and staff?
That's correct.
And it also includes the wages adjustment. Mayor, did you bring us a copy of the scale so that we can see this finally?
Put it in the mail office, lucky.
In the mailbox, I skipped it out of place.
Yeah.
Did anybody give us a bill of, up and down here? Anybody have a copy of the scale, of the Auburn Bay plane, out there?
Yeah, right. And again, we are building entire corporate, selling all the deals to our students and raise, and I did retrieve it from my mailbox.
Why, why really for that, your, your staff? Because I love to be clear when it comes to community development, it's so intricate.
Yes.
We have a compliance manager.
Yes.
We have a project manager.
No.
No project manager, we have a director.
Yes.
That's you?
Yes.
You have a compliance manager?
Yes, well, compliance officer.
Compliance officer, that's his card?
Yes.
Who else?
Well, there are three open positions in which I'm basically trying to add in addition. As you know, there used to be an assistant planning director within my department that was abolished before. And ultimately, the three new positions in which we're creating, as well as the hour of person will ultimately be housed through the Welcome Center, but it will be a joint effort, because they will also help with other items within the community as well.
So three new positions, but they're going down to the Welcome Center?
Part-time, yes.
And that one person that you be managing will be with?
The, at the Welcome Center as well.
All four of them?
Yes. Ultimately, what you have, you have one full-time staff down there, as well as the three-part-time. Ultimately, because you are dealing with revenue source and a stream, you really need to have someone. We have utilized that program and have done it to its fullest. But in order to do it at its fullest, you need somebody there full-time, and that can be accounted, on accountability end of that portion, as well as accountability for the three part-time staff that are gonna do twelve hours a week as well.
And then finally concerning four, four of the welcome center?
Yes.
Something kind of out of my head, I'm like, why we need four people there? Is, is somebody down there generating revenue?
Yes, that's the whole purpose of it.
Is that the full-time person?
Yes, that full-time person will be responsible for that ultimately. As well as, you know, ultimately, there's a need for three, because ultimately, if you have a full-time staff down there, there may be a separate issue when there are tourists and things of that nature that'll be available. The three part-time staff are gonna be staggered through their twelve hours per week, as well as there's weekend days in which there will be times to be worked as well. But there is no overtime listed within that. So that way, you will have staggered enough staff to make sure that there's always the coverage within the Welcome Center, as well as someone that's got these tours as well.
And that's whatever you have in mind?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin. Mr. Thompson, part of the council, compliance officer, so we just make sure we're in your class with the grants that we are receiving?
Well, that's what ultimately rule of compliance officer is basically, the regulatory portions of the grants, to make sure that we are within federal and state and local guidelines of the actual grant that actually walks it through, and kind of works hand-in-hand with finances as well.
My last question, are the AmeriCorps students still in the school system?
That's correct.
You know, in the spirit of partnership, we need to offer school to all the grants to see if they may have some of this.
That, that's a very great idea, and which is also something that the program in Montgomery has offered itself as well. They're, they have programs where they show that matches and things of that nature, showing the results of what can and could be done. They actually sent over a slideshow, kind of to basically, I don't wanna say promote, promote yourself to different programs or things that you're basically utilizing to give them incentives to wanna invest back into the thing.
Cause I've seen presentations in my, our office, we have them, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, so it's a very good program to kind of promote on that aspect as well.
What's, where's the projected revenue for this new tourism foray that we're gonna have down there at the Welcome Center? What's the projected revenue?
The projected revenue?
Tourism guide for City South?
Yes, ultimately, the program is gonna basically go back to what we have done in previous years. We don't have a projected revenue, because this is our first year of actually implementing this program. And we're basically gonna set it up based upon the things that we do have. We know that the actual revenue from the Welcome Center under other years has been about eight to ten thousand dollars in generated revenue. But we're looking to triple that overall, if we're very successful the way we think we should be.
So, we're gonna change the way we're looking at the entire Welcome Center to be a revenue stream? And the fact that we're gonna look at making sure the people are adhering in it? Are we gonna be able to move that forward to make it three times higher than it was the previous year?
Well, basically, the way it's gonna go is, you're gonna have the attendants that are gonna be there for any visitor that comes into the city. There are.
Like it has been in the past?
Yes, that's correct. There are tons of people that ask for either directions or want people to tell the story. And it has been outsourced, or there have been other individuals that have been doing this and generating the revenue that the city could look as a source of funding and revenue for us in our own capacity. So, what we want to do is not only look at it under the civil rights, but as well as the cemeteries that we have and off-the-coast tours as well.
So, a Selma approach to it?
That's correct.
Not just a one-sided approach?
That's correct.
Utilizing all of the historical assets?
That's correct.
And, and do you have people in mind for these positions, Eric?
We don't, we don't. We're going to, there's gonna be interviews, there's gonna be a process of, we are basically, we want someone that heck knows about the city and able to portray and paint this vivid picture to the people that are coming into our city.
That's a Herculean aspect, get somebody that's gonna fit that mold the way we need to fit it to work it out, so it creates a revenue stream. And then we have to promote it, like we need to promote our parking rec, and the other things in there. It's great to have services, but if we don't let the citizens know with a sign or a banner or anything else that's going on, that we don't have that, then we don't turn into a revenue stream. We just have it kind of lump along and make a little bit of money. So, hopefully, we can look at some of this allocation toward national advertising to use that to locally promote those services, as well as regionally support those services, so people can get hold of those things. Again, we don't know about them, we can't use them.
That's correct.
All right.
Speaking of AmeriCorps, I concur with the President, maybe the school that helps out with match costs. I hear they contend that they don't have the resources, and that should not prevent this city from continuing to support a very viable and very worthy program. I better inform that AmeriCorps in Dallas County, say, is a model program. And I was hoping that you can get some AmeriCorps officials in the near future to come down to talk to this council. Let them know what AmeriCorps doing here, how it benefits the community, and everything that it do. So, please, if you could, Mr. Thompson, get the AmeriCorps official down to Michigan.
Yes.
They can share with my colleagues the value and model this of AmeriCorps.
Yes, that's correct. And it's, it's, it is an invaluable asset, it's an invaluable tool, and we're proud to have it. We want to expand it in whatever methods are available to us to make it as great as we can. Because, you know, dealing with an area that has test scores and things of that nature that need improving, having an asset or something that will help add to that can only help the community. And I hope that the school system would concur with that as well. Definitely.
Mayor, is this included in the box?
Is it in?
Is this?
That's probably included in the box, the-
Oh, this is probably?
Well, some other things y'all asked for were the fees, that's included inside that, uh, package as well. But yes, those are the two pay scales that Auburn sent us.
I thought they sent us three originally, didn't they send us three?
Um, I have to give it with, um-
Was that when they first came in and went back and, I mean, dates that was here, when they first sent us the slides?
Well, maybe why, I guess I changed. Um, this is nothing, right? Where's the definition and explanation paid?
That's what Councilwoman Thompson's asked for, and Mariah told us, the earliest she calls me, he does to us, is next week sometime? Yes.
Yeah, Mariah?
Well, Mariah said the city had not paid all the money to Auburn yet. That's one of the reasons we haven't got the fully pack, the fully package yet.
How much is owed?
Well, she, we actually have the, um, the university finance department to contact us, um, so we're waiting to hear from them.
Ma'am, ma'am, turn around, Fred, do you know how much we owe, um, please, no, without our research? Would you find that out, please, that this, this is nothing?
Well, she's, well, again, it's not my information, it's what Auburn gave us. She gave us that to help with the budget. She said these are the pay scales y'all can use to make sure y'all have their numbers.
You look that?
Yes, I did.
There's nothing on it. That's what I'm getting at. Right, it's just, it's just-
They have pay scales like that in there.
Yeah, with nothing attached to it. No explanation page, like, at all, at all.
She knows, ma'am.
Step one, step two? I was under pressure, they paid over eighty thousand.
Me too.
That's why I wanna know. That's why I wanna know what the whole of it is.
Yeah, I think it was in two payments. Uh, it was already there, ongoing, when we came in.
I think it was two payments that you had.
And they kept promising and promising and promising and promising and promising and promising and now we owe money.
Right.
So, so, yeah.
They never said that before, but they kept making all the promises and all of a sudden, hey.
So, ma'am, I don't know how you feel about that document you handed, but I, the way I feel about, that's nothing. And you can read that to her, that, that tells, that tells me-
She asked, if you call, she actually came before the council.
And then we weren't paying her.
And, um, and she, and all these concerns could've came up during that time.
They did, but they did, ma'am, with promise of a full plan, which I thought you had in your office. And we said, if you told us you had a scale.
That is a scale.
That's not a scale, it's a skeleton, oh, nothing, and no explanation.
But Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman-
Tell her this, you tell her this.
Your conversation is with Auburn, not with me, that's what Auburn gave us.
What you're communicating.
Right. No, I'm actually coming for the council, that's what I do.
Yeah, tell her this, if we have paid her, we want our price.
But we haven't paid her.
You said if we have, cause we, we're here that we have. So if we have, we want our price.
Well, next time, I can use the university all the time.
Roll tide, Mr. City.
Roll tide, man.
Yeah, we got that, our price, my price, my price.
Any other? Councilwoman Bowlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, hi, I love that you're here.
Thank you.
Um, you can, Councilman Bowlin had mentioned about national advertising.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, can you tell me what we're doing with national advertising, what kind of national advertising we're doing?
Well, national advertising is to promote, um, our city.
No, I understand what it's for, but can you tell me what activities we do for national advertising? Like, do we put ads in Southern Living, do we put ads in, um,
Guns?
You know, guns and garden, do we put ads in, you know?
Yes, at one time, we used to use an advertising agency to basically, uh, cover all of that responsibilities for us in which they basically did a national contract where we would either put billboards and commercials in other cities or nationalities and basically, uh, promote our city. Ultimately, um, what we would like to have happen, we would love to, uh, invest in our city for visitors to see from other areas, uh, to actually notice or actually look upon visiting sites. So I would love that to happen.
Well, certainly, we need to do that because, you know, who wouldn't like to come to Selma and want to say no to what calendar events are?
Yes.
And I would like to see us use our national advertising money to do things like that, to get the word out to people in-
Washington, yes.
Well, and we have an asset we didn't have then, and that's social media and YouTube and all those other things.
That's correct.
If the city were looking to re-appropriating those dollars to come up with videos and things like that, do speak of the entire history of the community and do invite those guys. And then that would be a good use of that money as well, to use those channels that we have for investment, but long-term gain. Versus running an ad, got a campaign in Southern Living, which we used to do. Cause I used to run your account when I worked at Cunningham Group, and it was ABC for y'all. So I know very well the city's tourism and, uh, and advertising budget from the past. Haven't known since it's been elected, of course, but, uh, we know what worked and we know where they were coming from. And hopefully, that data still exists within your office somewhere?
Yes.
And we can pull that back. If you don't have it, I still have it, come back in the day, so let me know. I'll be happy to do this, you don't worry. Alright.
Any other questions? For Mr. Two?
Just finally, and it's really quick, do, the value of the merchandise that's in the welcome center, is it inventory? Is it inventory, do we know the value of the merchandise?
Yes, ma'am, I know the amount that was purchased and the amount that we still have on hand as well. We have both of those.
And you don't know how to take it?
No, but I can get it.
Who'd you get that for?
Yes.
And then, and you, the, the boxes, you know where they are?
Yes, they're in the welcome center.
Councilwoman Gitchin? Councilwoman Thompson?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, could I just ask you this question? Um, right before the, uh, before the layoff came, the welcome center was closed, I think it was around right during the time in November, uh, you had just purchased what, possibly about what, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Uh, approximately fifteen to twenty thousand. And that's, that's gonna be a part of our approach to, um, not only do we want to raise our, uh, social media aspect of it, we also would like to indulge into the online purchasing, uh, items in which certain materials and merchandise could be shipped to guests that live in other places of the country that don't, aren't able to visit. And we've been working with the IT department to create that kind of atmosphere to, we could do that as well.
You sense freedom?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
From this part, and that's nothing. I mean, face no cash store too.
That's correct.
So you shouldn't create a whole lot of IT effort on, I mean, cause-
That's correct.
My mom can set up a page, I know y'all can set up a page.
Anything else, Councilwoman Thompson?
No, I, I, I'll tell you your date, but I, I'm gonna ask you something, but I'll- It's something, it's, it's nothing, it didn't even get to question.
Okay.
It sells some nice shirts in there. Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for helping the project out there for one, man.
Yes.
Still appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from personnel? Anyone from personnel?
No, the mayor spoke for personnel last week.
I got to tell him, sir.
Ma'am, did we have an increase of the insurance rate?
Which one's insurance, something, um, health?
Health insurance.
Health insurance, and actually, so it's a, it's a double win. An increase, however, the total amount for us will decrease. Here's the reason why, it's based off the number of employees that we're gonna have, or projections that they have. Last year, we accounted for 1.3 million, um, this year, we're looking at 1 million and fifty-two thousand. Um, so the cost will increase, and, but it won't increase over all, what, the amount?
Cause I was based on, not only-
Yeah, I think it was 212 employees, but not, was 212 employees?
Two twenty-one, I think.
Two twenty-two, right.
So is that cost factored into the, uh, front door?
Well, we just got those numbers, uh, so the, the original budget we got back at the beginning of August, that number went in there. We just got that number the last week, so we did put it in as we updated budgets, we go along. That and also, um, we changed the rates for workers' comp, it's changed as well. It, it decreased a thing about twenty-some thousand.
Based on claims being filed.
Right, right, right.
Any other questions as it relates to personnel?
We hope the council are voting to restore the funding to the, uh, Y. Employees may be accessible. Shouldn't that have an impact on the group insurance maybe next year?
Yep. I think we, um, if the Y in the council, it's an agreement to, to establish membership as a wellness program for employees outside the city. Definitely, overall, next year, it should impact our, our insurance really, um, greatly.
I think, since the council, uh, we could recommend, Councilman, the committee of consensus that, that we would, would be in support of restoring the larger tax and with the condition that the employees be allowed membership, uh, to the Y. So they may not have that consensus.
Well, that was a recommendation of the committee, um, for the council.
I, I ought to support that.
Alright. Any other questions for personnel?
Hello?
Hey.
So, Gretchen? Gretchen?
One of the recommendations that you made at the council, a hundred dollars for a burial site? Did you make the recommendation of a hundred dollars for the burial plot? Maybe that's Michael Petey.
Um, he had not presented his information to the mayor on, on, uh, that Friday. And so it never made it to the council, Mr. President, um, but they were gonna bring it back by.
What's your opinion that is?
That, that increase that you had, I seen.
Prior to, um, Mr. Coon becoming the director, um, for, um, cemetery, the director, Petway had already put some increases inside the budget that you have. His numbers are comparable to those, I think Mr. Coon just went up a little bit higher. Um, so you do have it, what, what Michael Petway had before, cause we talked with him prior to leaving once we, we initiated the budget when we first gave it to you all.
About four hundred dollars?
Five hundred.
It was five.
Well, it, everything that we do's got a different, uh, different amount. And because Pineview just went up on theirs recently, I've developed a new proposal that the mayor and I only had time to look at briefly.
Yeah, I thought we mentioned the funeral, I reckon, but I think it was in concert with, uh, some of the recommendations that was made by Petway. And also, usually when you have a burial policy, you get a thousand dollars for, um, the plot, correct?
I, I don't know, we don't, we don't deal in insurance. All we want is, we charge a flat rate for a grave space, we charge a flat rate, rate for opening and closing, depending on whether it's a weekday or a weekend or a holiday.
Cause I think it's a thousand dollars that's earmarked for that through the terms, but not by chance.
Out of insurance policy, but, but like I said, I don't know. We just charge for our services. What the person collects on insurance, I don't know.
I moved my, I'm gonna take it once.
Thank you, Mr. President, hi, so Gretchen, couldn't help you? I just today went to, um, I've had a couple of other meetings today, but, um, and I went by the cemetery to check on what the daddy's way about there, the new lot, he love oak. And I was very pleasantly surprised to see the shape of the cemetery despite our lack of personnel. I know that our, our preservation group has been working very diligently and I know that you and the-
Well, well, yes, ma'am.
A lot of volunteers. I was delighted to see that. Um, one of the things that I, I noticed is, you know, the, I, I don't know how many plots that y'all have available. How many available plot, do you know I'll hand in this, maybe this morning, today I've been asked a lot of questions. I just don't know I'll hand, but I can get the information.
In U-Live Oak, I think we have something like twelve hundred spaces available to sell.
Okay.
There are twenty thousand thereabouts grave spaces in New Live Oak, of which about eleven thousand have been used. So there's a lot of spaces that have been sold, we're just waiting on a resident.
And we don't know, we don't know, some of those may never be used. People have moved away, they bought more than they needed, uh, we just don't know.
But there, there are about, out of that twenty thousand, about ten thousand are used. Ten thousand could still be used, but, and above that is about twelve hundred in U-Live Oak still for sale.
Okay, and, um, once people, once people buy the lot, the plot, um, that's it, right? I mean, they don't pay anything else, cause I know that we haven't paid anything else.
Opening and closing when it comes time to dig the grave.
Okay, and then for perpetual maintenance, they get perpetual care and they're not paying for it. It's like they get perpetual care free and it's sort of like a bonus thing.
My understanding, we've never termed that perpetual care there.
But they-
But the city has always taken-
Provided perpetual care. If people want to continue getting, things are just changing in the world and Selma's no different. In fact, things are changing in Selma probably at a much faster pace than they are other places. If people want to continue getting perpetual care for their loved ones, then they're going to have to, to, to do something else, either tend to give Selma, so they're gonna have to pay a little bit more. So we're gonna have to do something, cause what is it? The lots are undoubtedly cheap, I'm just gonna say the C-word, I hate cheap, but it is, cause I used to have a husband that was that way. But, uh, cheap, 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 anyway, um, so-
The cemetery's never gonna be a money-making proposition.
Nor should it be, but at least it should break even.
I don't know.
And, or not even, not necessarily break even, but at least to provide, but our cemeteries, we have, have always been something in which we took great pride.
That's right.
And they were, were, were things that people enjoyed seeing. It was not something of dooming gloom, it was something that people celebrated. And, um, and that's kept going the way of the wild goose right now, going the way of the dodo bird. Um, if we don't do something, get a hold of something-
If y'all examine the, the prices that I've, I've recommended, we can reduce some of the shortfall that we have. Uh, we won't close the gap completely. That's based on the same number of people that we've had where the budget was running four hundred thousand dollars. We can close that gap a little bit with some pricing increases. And our price increases are, will be competitive with what Pineview has just raised theirs to, will still be a little cheaper than Pine.
How much did you recommend the increase?
Did you bring a copy to that?
I have what Pineview just went to, I only have one copy.
Yeah, we have an answer.
But I can tell you, okay, Pineview is selling a grave space for, um, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. We've been selling grave spaces for three hundred dollars. I recommend that we go to five seventy-five on a grave space in New Live Oak, five twenty-five in Lorenzo Harrison. So again, Pineview's six seventy-five, we're only three hundred right now and two fifty in New Live Oak and Lorenzo Harrison.
I can do that. I think for practice, you know, some of the surrounding areas, it's a faster launch.
And Pine, uh, Pineview is asking six hundred dollars for opening and closing Monday through Friday, and we're at three hundred dollars. So we're already half their double what we are. I'm recommending that we go to five hundred dollars during the week. Uh, hun, we always, we're maybe about a hundred dollars less. Uh, they've got a, uh, premium price if you have a Saturday or a Sunday funeral. In addition to what the, the opening and closing would be paid, they charge four hundred dollars extra for a Saturday and Sunday funeral. I'm recommending we would charge three hundred dollars extra for a Saturday and Sunday funeral. Does that give you an idea of where we're at?
Councilwoman Thompson, when we met the funeral directors?
Yes, that's when I was, you was reading out the, we had a meeting with the funeral director. Uh, those are your recent, uh, prices they gave, or you, how long, just recently got those?
This, this, this is a new price from Pineview. Large funeral, they don't have a, they, they, they're in the same situation we are basically. They have to go out and use somebody else's cemetery. They would, he was making a proposal, as I understand it, to bring X number of people back, not all of the people, bring back some of the people and implement some price changes and we could break even. Uh, if you, we bring less people, have less people on the staff, obviously, we can close the gap that way. I submit that we need the number of people that we have, or if you give us half of what we had, we're gonna work with that. Uh, may take a little longer to do things, but, uh, right now, the budget previously has been around four hundred thousand dollars a year. And I think we bring in somewhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred thousand. We bury about two hundred to two hundred and twenty people every year between New Live Oak and Lorenzo-
Yeah, well, I think it's around the area, it's starting on nine hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's right.
Counselor Thomas and Counselor.
Yeah, I'd like to hear you say, you set the price for Lorenzo Harrison Cemetery. How much did you say the grave was, right there?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, then you say for?
Three hundred dollars, right now, right now. And we buried a lot of people in Lorenzo Harrison that we don't get any money for on a grave space, because historically, they don't, they, they didn't get deedings years ago out there. So if families come and say, this is my mother, this is my father, or this is my aunt, and I'd like to be buried next to them, we call that a family lot, and we try to bury them there, and we don't charge them for a grave space. Uh, I'm just carrying on what has been done in the past. That can always be changed, and you don't have a deed, regardless where the space is, it could pay some money. But that's not the way it's been. Yes, Dan?
I want to ask you this too. Um, I remember, uh, Mrs. Gardner, uh, you know, they had a record book of when you were going to write, like you said, half of the people, like some people bury their family member next there, and you were saying that they don't have a, a family plot. But then, uh, when, um, Bain used to, one of you had, one guy used to keep the record of family members that when they're being buried, y'all had a guy?
We do that, and we know where they're buried, but some, we bury some people who do not pay for any plot, but we keep up with where we buried them.
Okay. I just wanted.
I've had a recommendation that the, the way it has been done at Lorenzo Harrison remained the same, because we all know how that cemetery was constructed in the first place. However, I, I would like, Mr. President and the council, to consider giving veterans a hundred dollar discount, a hundred dollar less than what anybody else would pay them. I think, I think we owe it to our veterans, and I don't think we create a financial hardship on, on the city itself, so I think that's something that we should give our veterans. Would you have a problem with that?
I, I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I know, I can too, see, yeah, yeah. I said, let's keep the situation at Lorenzo Harrison the same. But if somebody says, this is my, this is my family plot, yes, that you would continue to honor that. I, I, I also, give the veterans a hundred dollars less than what anybody else would pay them, and, uh, give them a discount for their services to our town. Would you have a problem with that?
I wouldn't, if y'all don't.
I think the council needs to consider it, Mr. President.
Just in Lorenzo Harrison or everywhere?
Everywhere.
We can't apply it across the board, because a lot of people that we, a lot of veterans that we buried, they've owned their spaces in New Ulaah Oak for a lot of years. What we did, we have been giving the veterans, is they get a V A marker, and we don't charge them thirty dollars to put a marker down. But part of my proposal that I want to bring to y'all, if the mayor and I have, is we want to do away with the marker fee completely, which is negligible, uh, thirty dollars for every marker. We put a hundred markers times thirty, what's that? Three thousand dollars a year. I'm spending a lot of time chasing thirty dollars out there for the city to get three thousand dollars. I think there are several, these price increases can override the thirty dollar fee that we're getting for markers, and we also do transfers. People come in and want to transfer your lot ownership to your lot to, to Councilman Benjamin, and we do that for free. You go down to the courthouse, you want to transfer your property, I think there's a transfer fee. So we could do a fifty dollar transfer fee if you want to transfer your property into another name, it also comes with a little bit of loss. We do probably twenty or twenty-five or more transfers a year. It may not make up the difference in the, the, uh, thirty dollars we lose in the markers, some of these other price increases, weekend premium fees for Saturdays and Sundays, and some increases in grave prices with, of, some of that. I just need to put it in a table format and show it to y'all, or it would be meaningful to you.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. You know, you know the questions for Superintendent Coon? Any other questions? Do you have, you have a question? Counselor? Thank you, Superintendent Coon. Is Mr. Lee here? Quick question right there. Our building, hey, our building, it's supposed to be, it's on what, about ten dollars?
Yes.
I mean, I, I put them around, several areas under the pit. But it's on the table.
I think, I think, I think you're talking about the building permit.
Permit.
It's two hundred and fifty in other places. Now, and the budget, it's in your mailbox, we have a chart in your mailbox that we proposing to take another three hundred. What, what picture that?
What we paying on ten?
Huh?
What we paying on that?
The state commission. Yeah, yeah, we, we propose to take another twenty-five. That's specs for each, yes.
Okay.
Well, Auburn, Montgomery, Troy, and Prattville, they're at twenty-five and thirty-five, and so we weren't trying to go beyond surrounding cities, but the council, um, willing to go to that direction, by all means, will support that.
Thirty-five?
Yes, please do.
Thirty-five people that need to show their parents.
Yeah. And that, Mr. Mr. Boyd, one thing, ours is ten dollars for to cover everything at one time, and the other cities, it's twenty-five for each different thing that you go out, every time you go out.
Which again, as we discussed, helps them not take advantage of your time, sir, so they have to make sure that they have everything, all their ducks in a row, before they call you, they're gonna be a hemorrhage month. So it's a deterrent, as well as a way to make sure we're making the money from this gentleman having to get in his truck and drive down that way and burn gas and burn tire.
What you, what you recommend, Mr. Boyd?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, thirty-five?
Yes.
Thirty-five. I asked Harrison to go get that fee comparison, so you guys can see exactly what these cities charging.
Okay, so you said thirty-five dollars?
Hmm.
You, you gonna recommend thirty-five dollars?
Yes.
For the inspection.
So, in the, in the compare to metro cities, these big cities the mayor just mentioned, how much are they?
Montgomery's at thirty-five, I'm not mistaken, but Prattville and Troy at twenty-five.
Are you recommending thirty-five? That's interesting.
We'll meet you halfway at thirty.
Just saying it's interesting.
They also have frequency.
Yeah, frequency.
I mean, they have more quantity than we have.
Which should be less.
Right, they wish it was there. They had less, we had more work, I mean, obviously.
So you recommend thirty dollars? You compromise thirty? You go ahead, Rick. Twenty-five?
We're at ten now.
We're at ten now.
The budget's twenty-five.
Okay. Thirty-five for the fee.
That's what Mon, what Montgomery was charged, thirty-five.
Per time.
Per time, yeah.
Time, yeah.
Twenty-five.
For that inspection, and what's your other fee?
Permit. It's the being of value, being of value to the job.
Well, that's ten dollars.
No, the permit, depends on the value of the job.
So that didn't change. That's based on a percentage, how much is it gonna cost?
The ass inspection is twenty dollars, but this, I have to go out there, want to put the gauge on, and go back twenty-four hours later, make sure the gauge's on, pressure right.
You're, you're recommending, like, for each, per, per, for each?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
For each item, per physical?
Right.
So in that situation, you just gave example of, you may have to be twice, the first time you go out there, you get paid, the second time you go out there.
Right.
It's not even worth the fuel. And they take advantage of the power, I'm sure, because they know to have everything together, so only ten bucks.
Good.
That's less than lunch.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Boyd. All right, anyone else at this time? Miss Davis. Quick question, one question, that's all I have.
Yes, sir.
I think one of your recommendations was that we want to bang two, four, ten, you said the building, I wasn't there.
Two floors.
Two floors. They would set the building up there.
That one, maybe so.
One minute.
That wasn't set the building up now.
Uh?
That wasn't set the building up. That was follow up by their setups, make sure that they, make, make sure that the clients have the building set up and cleaned and everything right, and they have to follow behind, like I'm doing now. I wouldn't have to do it, they have to.
To the reason I asked, uh, I'm gonna.
We need more to, we don't set up again.
How many do you have with seven?
You had seven before, and some of them were, that I, I don't know the title, um, I don't know the title of eyes, and all of them. I made the type, all of us custodians. Okay, all, all of us custodians. I made sure, make a stand, and two of four, two, two, four.
It was two, four timed custodians, I don't have the budget front of me, I know, and a Masonist person in budgets, do, do small workaround, um.
Counselor, your budget, Councilman?
Yes.
You think what page you want to make?
Building page seventeen for the overall budget, I get to go to the employees in the back. That's for the overall budget.
Okay.
So say what budget right there.
Um, page thirty-two.
Eleven thirty-two.
Eleven thirty-two.
Those custodians would be, like, back to cleaning, you would have to have cleaning ladies in sit-hall, they would be cleaning sit-hall.
All, all.
But for events, they would not, they would not set up the breakdown like in the past, these two custodians.
Now, that contract.
I think this question was asked, 'cause I thought they would.
That contract wanted to be changed. Now, the contract that you all passed recently, the responsibility was on the person who was renting.
This company.
The breakdown, right, right. But if the contract is gonna be changed, and the, the real, the council go back to the direction as it used to be, of course, it would be more staffing.
So that's what I'm asking, with this projection right here, is proposed, the two custodians, that's why I was asking, with part of their duty, go back to, um, you're saying, no, Brad?
I'm saying, no, if you change the contract back to the old contract, like you own, back to, they would have, they would have to have some more staff.
We need that.
We would have some more staff.
Right.
Okay. We would have to have some more staff. But if you don't, then we won't move. See what I'm saying?
If I have to go, pick it off across the board for, for the buildings.
Of, of the price?
Well, that's what I was asking, about to.
Well, if, if we're gonna go back to the men setting and, and setting up the building to do it, we're gonna have to have more staff. 'Cause I wouldn't be able to see what I'm saying, sometimes we have back-to-back two bits. I wouldn't be able to have just two men coming in, cleaning sit, 'cause I'm proposing that they take care of sit-hall, you wouldn't have to have the ladies back to sit-hall clean, the men would do it, 'cause once a month, they came over and did it anyway. See what I'm saying? So if they came, if, if, I have to have more than just two in order to do it.
And then we have to, because that's too much. I think if I have somewhere now, that would work the line up to the church.
The reason, the reason we have to do that is because we didn't have any, any staff from the city there. One staff from the city is there, is back on the city. Okay? Yeah.
And then we have to, because that's all we have to do. I think the contract is, need to be, that would need, there's too much liability. I think if I have somewhere now, that would work the line up to the church.
The reason, the reason we have to do that is because we didn't have any, any staff from the city there. One staff from the city is there, is back on the city. Okay? Yeah.
And then we have to, because that's too much. I think the contract is, need to be, that would need, there's too much liability. I think if I have somewhere now, that would work the line up to the church.
The reason, the reason we have to do that is because we didn't have any, any staff from the city there. One staff from the city is there, is back on the city. Okay? Yeah.
And then we have to, because that's all we have to do. And then we have to, because that's all we have to do. And then we have to, because that's all we have to do.
It's up to the council?
I'm busy.
The chair has.
Yeah, I have.
Oh, I'm busy. Counselor, more, more time.
Okay, I, you, you discussed it, it, it's now, this, this is one thing that what I was saying, uh, President Boyd, um, and every council, the bodies wasn't here, and when we had our discussion about the building, uh, budget, we didn't have anybody there, but now, everything wants to come out. You have a chairperson, that's what you gotta respect too, and we have a committee. Some of the things that you were saying now should have been brought out, not begin, in the beginning, but we did. We know that we don't have bodies there to work in there, right now, in that department. You can't change the policy till we get the workers, you have to get the workers.
I got two, two things, Councilwoman. The meeting you referring to was two weeks ago.
No, 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 I'm not talking.
The, the budget hearing, and then, but we came last, but Liz Davis came last week to address that concern, so we re-hash it again. I'm not sure why we re-hashing it, but she came last week to say the same thing that she's saying now, you heard it back then, so I'm not sure why.
No, but something else is being added, other things are being added.
Well, the president brought that up. She didn't bring that up.
Well, but that's what I'm saying, president wasn't, wasn't there at the, uh, the meeting we had, uh, that's the purpose of a budget, uh, anything that you need to add on or add and out, uh, that's, that's where you have a budget here. And then now, uh, there are other things that you're bringing out, that, no, but I finished it, and you can say, let me, let me say what I have to say first. When we had the meeting, we was there to discuss, and everybody had a suggestion that, that wanted to, say, to add on to the building, you could have had your opportunity, even right there. He, he knows that we had the meeting, and then he came up that we wanted to add on fifty dollars, uh, to the, uh, to the buildings, or we wanted to change the policy, you know what I'm saying? You gotta have a little respect towards the council, too. Now, you, you, you're speaking, uh, it's more than one, that we represent the whole entire city, but I'm just saying, I have a right to say, but I want anybody to look and frown, but business, business, that's where we conduct it, after all that we work, but now you're adding on other things about the, of the.
Oh, I just like.
No, 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 I talk about you, President Boyd.
Let me, President Boyd is the one who asked the question, Councilwoman Thomas, and I answered his question, that's what happened. Is, is that what happened?
Yes.
Okay. And I answered his question. That's all, that's all. I answered your question, right?
Okay.
And, and Councilwoman Benjamin, I answered your question, right? I answered your question, right? Okay.
Well, I'm saying, President Boyd, if, if, uh, you wanted to, you know, we had a, we had a budget here, you know that we were meeting, and that suggested that you wanted to say, bring, you want to add on, keep with this to get some bodies in here, I think that's all we need, uh, regarding to the budget here right now, it's just like throwing in, you, you throw it, I'm, I'm just saying, me.
I, I will draw the question.
I, I want to say, I, I think the confusion came in, Councilwoman, uh, Thomas conducted a committee meeting, and she has those recommendations, and what you should do is just give those recommendations at this meeting, I think that's what this meeting is for. Um, President Boyd asked, um, concerning the two addition, I don't know if he put a number on it, but he did bring that question out, and that's how we came about, but you have recommendations, I think Councilwoman Youngblood has recommendations concerning community development, have all her recommendations, um, so I think this is gonna go beyond, um, today, probably, Mr. President.
With this inquiry, man, that's all. Are you, are you suggesting that we're now going on a list, do you think, Councilman?
No, not at all, no. No, I mean, these recommendations, there were a lot of recommendations that came out during the budget hearings from several of you all, and, uh, so we're gonna have to make our way through that. We're gonna have to get some important things in, like amateur clerk, that hopefully will that hopefully will be in on, you know, those kinds of things. But there are other things that some did not get to recommend at all from their committee meetings, but most did. Because they were here, most did get their recommendations.
Well, I hope it's pretty close. We had the twelve hour legislature by law, but we stay here until we are ready to put a budget up and down.
That's what the five o'clock meeting is for today.
Any other questions for Ms. Davis? Any other questions for her? We can just work that out in the committee meeting, Councilwoman Thomas. But it just, I guess the gatorade got to my mind.
Look, Mr. President, I just add, you know, even though things are discussed, some people are here, some people are not. You know, for whatever reason they're not, I'm not here to condemn them. I'm sure they have better reasonable reasons. But things don't have to remain the same. Something because you discussed something on Monday. Some new ideas and some new changes that they place in between. And when those thoughts come up, they need to be resonating and spoken about. I think, Mr. Boyd, that what you suggested is valid, and I think it is needed. Because it is scary in the depth of these contracts and these citizens, you know, just turn loose in the buildings that the city owns. The liability increases and, and not only we don't need no more losses. I think if we put it back on, no hands of the city, I think we can do it wise and justice to the city.
Council? Okay. I, I hear you, Councilwoman Short, but I like to say this here. No, you knew when, when, when these workers got laid off from November the second or November seventh, that this city didn't, was in liability then. Because people were renting the buildings before, before this committee, Public Billing Committee got together. I know some councilpeople, you know, when you have, when you over your committee and you make your recommendation. Me, as the chairperson, been dealing with this here for almost a year. And then the cooperation that I have got, I haven't put my foot in there one of those buildings. We said, we have ten buildings that we operate. And if we're going to work together and speak, you know, you say you make your best recommendation. But as the chairperson, I made a recommendation because I have been bending over backwards, working very hard, dearly, trying to move the city forward with these buildings and repairs of people renting. And I feel the same way you do, but when those people rented those buildings, they took out, they had to pay for their own insurance. They had to pay their own money. And I understand what you said when you said turn back over. We don't turn nothing back over till we get some bodies in there to. We need bodies. We need bodies in there. That's how I feel. My recommendation.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman.
Oh, I appreciate it. And Councilwoman Short, I think those buildings was not left with citizens until after the new contract. Myself and Stephanie worked every evening was going on to the new contract. I worked sometimes sixteen hours a day. Because I stayed over there, Bill, or Stephanie and I, we cleaned those buildings. And we stayed in those buildings until the new contract, and though when the new contract came out, I don't remember. But it wasn't too many months ago. So it was enough on the.
Right.
Uh, President Boyd?
I'm, I'm speaking to the body of the council. When you have your committee meetings, when you have your, whatever you be over, Councilwoman Thomas don't kick against it. I'm about doing what's right. And I have been, people have rent those buildings. And they talk about the work and cleanup have been done. I, I, I can't tell it. The floor is about as black as the ground out there. You take your feet off, you pair your shoes off and walk bath with it. You look up under there, it's, it's, it's about as black as that tar out there. So I'm, I'm saying, people, you can get, people can get mad with me, but I'm going to speak the truth, whether you like it or not. I'm a stand firm believer doing things what's right, and I don't have to argue about this. I am, I am, I represented the building, and ever since I've been there, President Boyd know how hard I have tried to work. Diligent with the department head, and it was always something coming up. When we tried to have meetings, it was always something coming, even though our councilpeople didn't, wasn't into it when we have the building, our meetings. They didn't show up, but the citizens showed up because they were concerned, because they were paying their money. So that's how I feel, President, as the chairperson. I'm, I'm an elected official. I don't work for the mayor on a day-to-day operation. I work for the citizen himself to do what's right, and if I have to stand firm and speak, I don't care if a councilup here don't like what I say. I'm still going to speak how I feel, what things need to be done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Are there any other department heads at this time? If not, go ahead.
I heard Mr. Thomas mentioned about how black the floors is. And any citizen that are renting them buildings is not going to take time to get them floors cleaned like they should. I think we need to have the workers back, somebody to run a buffer. The buffer slows down. And like President Boyd said, just bring some more workers back. That's what we're here now for, is to adjust this budget, to put more money into this planning development, uh, the public building, to get that taken care of. Of course, we do that, they're going to take the new contract. So you, you saying that what need be done, so let's talk about what get to take care. New workers, and I'm thinking right now, what Mr. President Boyd said again, you, you got your company. I understand what you're saying. But right now, this what we're here for now, is to add more workers if they choose, and that way, let's get rid of that. And let's bring the workers back. That way we get the floors more clean like they should, and get the building what it's supposed to be. And that way we can start charging like we should be charging.
Yes.
And I, and I agree with that.
Councilwoman, before I go, I want to tell you, you may have, you may have left Councilwoman Jack Johnson last week. Councilwoman Jackson and Council, and, and Ms. Davis had a conversation concerning what they think might be workable and doable. And then Councilwoman Thomas made three recommendations. Councilwoman Short made one recommendation. Y'all are saying the same thing. Y'all, y'all, y'all are saying the exact same, exact same thing.
Some magic.
I don't think you were here for that conversation. And that's what's going on here. There was some absent people and some present people. And what we're doing is we're having this meeting again that we already had.
Well, I want to have a meeting.
And so your recommendations, Councilwoman?
I just like to do my recommendation. When the time comes, I will, I will say what the recommendation, and that's, that's all I want to say.
And I have them.
Okay.
Here too, for you, just in case you didn't write back. I have them as well.
Thank you. And the same, yes. Any other question? Any other question?
Yeah, Mr. President. Looking at the twenty, nineteen twenties budget in the Chris office. We all voted last year, put in last year's budget for the fixed assets. And that need, I have not had any updated information of where we are, but I'm sure we both are now doing what we were last week. But I do think that need to be noted in the Chris budget, that twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Because I, the last I heard, that the bids have gone out.
That's Wade, you got him to make one out?
From my understanding.
Bids going out on the fixed asset?
Yes, sir.
You got a deadline for that? There's a deadline. Have we received any?
Once or more.
Okay. Is that the one from Minnesota, Ms. Wade?
I wouldn't know. I prefer to disclose it in there.
Okay.
But Councilwoman Thomas? Go ahead, Councilwoman Thomas.
It was a recommendation that from now on, when our committees have something, to make sure that our department heads come out. It was a recommendation that we e, we emailed the mayor. On, so when we, we, we want to move forward and have people present to address their issues or what they have. I think we need to have a better connection.
When I emailed, I emailed it to fifty-two individuals. Everybody from the council, mayor's office, everybody.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. President, when you were asking, I think there was some confusion about Ms. Davis herself receiving that information. And I don't know, I don't know if she has, I don't know if she's on the list, sir, but what I told her was exactly what you said just now. Is that you send it to the media, you send it to department heads, you send it to the mayor's office, the whole gamut of people that he sent the notices out to. But there was a disconnect when Ms. Ms. Davis had delayed, that she was not getting, she was not getting.
She's done on my news story.
If I can, I think I can correct some, some miscommunication that's going on even now. The statement was in regards to party two eight minutes sent out to the press, so the department heads will be aware of it, party two to the meeting. Not what you sent out to the press, but to make sure that their schedules are aligned in with the time that the committee wants to meet. So if you want to meet on a certain day, make sure that the department head say, yes, I can be there that date. And that's why I asked the chairperson to contact the department and say, yes, that date is available. So that, that, that was, the conversation was about it, wasn't about what you sent out emails about the, the meetings I really sent. It's party to the meeting.
It's usually what I do, I text the mayor, I get that with department head, the department didn't get to be there, so.
So they would contact my office, so I can make sure we get in contact with the department, and then we'll let you know before you send it out.
Go ahead on.
Right, with that building.
If I come on, just go ahead on, whatever the department head didn't be there. I think you'd be able to, if we notice in a timely manner, I think it's for.
What's that now? I was going to say, and then, you know, I mean, obviously, if I understand what you're saying, basically, you know, if you're not available September third, and that's the day I got available, we got to reschedule, so I'm available as well as you're available. So again, trying to align those schedules, it can be complex, so it may not be as simple as just firing up a date. Include several dates for your availability, as well as trying to get several dates back from.
Request form, and that way, it can be a form of documentation and accountability.
Right, right. And I'm just going to say, just to expedite that, include several different dates, so if you can't be available September third, but you're available September fifth, then you can schedule that so you have subsequent, you know, tertiary, secondary, tertiary dates available. Because that's always the next move if you can't line up on the same day.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other department heads? Any other department? Okay? Yes, I'll see everyone in five more. Three twenty-two.
Back at three twenty-two, we're going to five.
Five o'clock, it's three twenty-two now.